Good evening. I am happy to call this May 19th Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. Got to use my gavel again here in City Hall. Very exciting evening as we have a number of commissioners who have joined us here in person at City Hall once again, and also excited that our commission is once again full. We have two people that have joined the commission and I'm going to let them each spend just a moment introducing themselves, starting with Roisin O'Farrell.
Hi, everyone. I'm Roisin O'Farrell.
Turn on your mic.
Good evening, everyone. Just getting used to the mic situation again. This is my second term as Planning Commission. I was on the commission 2017, I think it was, to 2019. So it's really exciting to be back and looking forward to accomplishing a lot of great things this time. Thank you.
And also joining the commission, Carrie Bosworth.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Bosworth. First time on a commission in Sammamish, have lived here for four years and have been following along with meetings and, you know, I'm happy to now be involved more in a more public capacity. So, thank you.
All right, welcome to both of you. Next, I'm going to do roll call and I'm going to go to the old fashioned way and call your names, starting from my left. TC Labby.
Present.
Roisin O'Farrell.
Here.
I'm Mark Bachman. I'm here. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
And Mike Bresko.
Here.
And then Jerry Norman.
Here.
Great, thank you, everyone. Next, we have a meeting accessibility statement to read.
Yes, we do. Give me one second to get that pulled up in the screen share. Because we are now open for the public to attend in person to provide comment, this is for our virtual commenters. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda public comment, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. Once you've dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your micro will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, you may join the webinar via the link or if you're joining by phone, please dial 1-253-215-8782 and enter the webinar ID And in the order, we will go, excuse me, we will take public comment in the order of folks who are wishing to give public comment in person first, and then we will go to virtual public comment.
Thank you. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. This evening, we have a presentation on the Housing Action Plan. Does anyone have any comments or corrections or changes, I should say, for the agenda? Okay, no comments. We'll call the agenda approved by common consent. We do need to do approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Does anyone have any corrections from our, let's see what the date was for that one? April 21st meeting. Any comments, corrections? Nope. So we'll call the minutes approved by common consent. Next, we have public comment on non-agenda. Does anyone want to make public comment on non-agenda items? And remember, the agenda item this evening is the Housing Action Plan, so anything else?
We're getting notifications on chat from Ms. Victor that the sound just died. Ms. Victor, can you hear us now? Looks like the sound is dead. Mary, can you hear us now? I think I had just muted the meeting, so that's my fault. We are at the stage for public comment. It looks like we have one commenter already. I will go ahead and promote them to panelist.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I've been in Sammamish 20 years, 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Thanks for turning the sound back on. And welcome to old and new planning board and planning commission members and all the people that ask great questions and review things. I just wanted to speak briefly. There's been so many people that have tried out for positions for city council and for the planning commission. And it is really important to get public input from as many people in as wide a venue as we can. So if there's anyone out there that was not appointed but tried out, pick a topic that you're interested in, follow it up, come to a meeting, speak virtually, just calling by phone. We need to hear from as many people as we can. And then for the other thing for the planning commission is we get three minutes non-agenda and then we get seven minutes either as public hearing or before deliberation or at the end of the meeting. And it's a long time to talk, but you can go in depth on things. And for the planning commission, I know it's hard to listen all that time, so I've seen meetings where people give really great public comment and there's a lot of topics that they have or an item, or sometimes it's just one point that they make. Or sometimes there's just one word that they say that triggers a thought or an emotion or something that connects to something. So it's really important that you write that down while you're listening and then bring it up because regardless of what any of us say, if you guys don't pick up on it and talk about it or ask or put it into an motion or amendment, it doesn't happen. So sometimes we're just giving information, but sometimes we're bringing up things that really need to get happened. And the way they get activated is for a planning commissioner to take that up as part of their comments or their questions and get it into a motion or say that it's something important that staff should look at or it's something that should go to city council. So thank you for listening to me tonight. And I didn't turn on my camera because I'm having trouble with my computer, but at least I can hear and see the meeting now. So thank you and I look forward to a good meeting on housing tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. We have one more hand raised for public comment. I will go ahead and promote them.
Hello, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney. And before I start my comment, can I ask something first before the three minutes? I didn't hear whether Josh Amato was coming to tonight's meeting.
That was my fault. I skipped Josh because I knew that he was excused for the evening. I apologize for that. So Josh Amato is excused this evening.
Alrighty, not a problem. I just didn't hear that. Alright. Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Sammamish. My non-agenda comment is going to be a little bit of the information that I provided city council last week and a verbal comment that I gave to the council on Tuesday. As all of you on this panel have experienced and many that are active on social media or active in, you know, political circles, everybody knows that a core issue in Sammamish is how our community grows. That really is the fundamental issue that drives a lot of emotion. And I sent in an email about EI versus IE. And EI is an acronym that stands for emotion and ideology. And how that applies to housing growth is what has driven what's happened in our first comp plan, second comp plan, the prior housing strategy plan, Burke Study, Economic Development Strategic Plan, is when it comes to housing, most of the information, the lion's share, has been rooted in emotion and ideology. What's been missing is the IE part of it. And that is information that we've never had, that I'm going to talk about later in the seven minute portion. But more importantly, it's the emotions that you can't get access to or feel until you know what the information is and can really understand all the consequences of actions on what direction of growth our community takes. So it's time to temper EIs with IE. And that's a combination, too, jumping into the deep end of the pool, my closing statement for the city council on what I wrote them was procure IE to help determine appropriate, desirable, citywide housing land uses and then plan everything else accordingly. I made a statement to city council in three minutes. I'm going to skip all of it except one thing. Think of housing in Sammamish like a pizza. Sammamish has shrunk the size of the pizza down significantly since it incorporated, mostly by means of development regulations. But imagine you're surprised if you open the pizza box and you find there's a lot of slices missing. Think of those slices as different and diverse housing types that our community has never filled in, what the housing needs are for those living in our community over time. I'll speak more on this during the agenda item and thanks for the opportunity to sort of add limb to those two topics. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. That was the last of our public comment.
Thank you. I am going to assume with humor that Mary meant when she said welcome to old commissioners that she meant experienced commissioners among us. That's going to be my assumption. Okay. The main agenda topic for this evening is a presentation on the Housing Action Plan. And I believe this is Lindsey and Elliot. So let's go ahead and jump into our main topic for the evening.
Great, thank you, Chair. Give me just a moment to share my screen. Okay. Yes, thank you, Chairman Bachman and planning commission members. My name is Lindsey Channing and I'm the project manager for the Housing Action Plan. With me this evening, I have our lead consultant Elliot Weiss, and we also have Miriam Latner and Kelly Hildy that may be jumping in later during the question and answer section if needed. But for this evening, we are going to talk about the following topics. If I can get this to work. There we go. An overview of the Housing Action Plan project, which we call HAP, who our consultant team is made up of work that we've done to date within Sammamish in regards to housing, the objective of the grant that we received, and then the timeline and tasks of the grant. We'll then move into data collection strategy, which that presentation at that point, I will hand over to Elliot. And then also briefly, the public engagement plan overview and what the main survey topics are focused on for the survey that we'll be conducting or surveys this summer. So again, this evening, we have Elliot Weiss. He's our project manager with Community Attributes, Inc. They've also subcontracted with Makers, Bob Bangford, who is not joining us this evening. You'll see him later on in the process as we get closer to the public hearings and whatnot. But Elliot, again, will be presenting later this evening. For a background on the housing work that's been done in the city to date, this really started with a focus back in 2015 when the comprehensive plan was adopted with our updated housing element. Then we moved into the project known as Sammamish Homegrown, which was a housing strategy and that occurred between approximately 2017 and 2019. From 2018 to 2019, the city worked on phase one of the update of our development regulations. In 2020 to 2021, the city completed the phase two update and now we're switching focus to completing the development regulation update, which is known as phase three. We participate in a regional coalition for housing, otherwise known as ARCH. Their mission is to help preserve and increase housing for low to moderate income households in Sammamish and the surrounding region. Initially, back in January, Miriam Latner had come to the planning commission and given a presentation in regards to receiving this grant from Department of Commerce. And it was relayed to the planning commission that we were going to be working with ARCH and ARCH was going to be the entity that was to procure and manage the consultant for this grant. And it was going to be part of a much larger contract. However, due to their staff capacity and coordination with the city of Bellevue, which is their parent city for ARCH, this was delayed in the timeline due to some legal analysis associated with their third-party consulting contracts that they were dealing with. So to ensure that we were able as a city to meet our obligations of the grant that we received from Commerce, we decided to move forward to have city staff take the lead to procure a consultant and also manage that contract. So on March 1st, the city council did approve the consultant contract with CAI. And that has started the work and brought us here this evening for an update. We, sorry, I think I skipped a slide there. Also, we are going to be using the work from this Housing Action Plan to help us fulfill future reporting requirements that are coming at us from the state and that's associated with the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Once it's been adopted, we'll also be using a lot of the information that we obtain and put into this plan as a portion of our 2024 Comprehensive Plan work, as a large focus of that update is on the housing element. So you kind of see the theme moving forward for the city and has been a theme and something that we need to focus on. The plan objective is that the city's Housing Action Plan will encourage additional affordable and market rate housing in a variety of housing types at prices accessible to a broad range of incomes. So we have four main tasks outlined in the grant that we received. We need to conduct a housing needs assessment. That's the first task and is underway. We need to spend a large portion of our work and time engaging in community, engaging with our community and our stakeholders. We also need to draft the Housing Action Plan and then beginning at the beginning of 2023, which I'll show you some dates here in just a moment, but beginning in early 2023, we'll be working through the review and adoption process with needing to accomplish that adoption in June of 2023 at the city council level. So we have a number of public meetings scheduled to take us through this process. We already conducted our first meeting with city council on May 3rd. They were given this presentation as well that we're giving you this evening. It's to go over the outreach and data analysis, as I outlined earlier in our presentation. We're here tonight to do the same thing. And then we'll be doing a bulk of our initial work and public engagement and stakeholder outreach this summer. And then we'll be conducting a joint meeting with planning commission and city council on September 20th, where we'll be going over the housing needs assessment results. And then in December, we will conduct a meeting with planning commission and a separate meeting with city council to give an update on what the proposed potential strategies to implement the plan will look like. We'll do a review of the draft Housing Action Plan with planning commission in March of 2023, which will lead into the public hearing that's scheduled currently for April 6th of 2023, where we're hopeful that planning commission will make a recommendation to city council at that time. With that recommendation, we'll be able to go to city council on May 9th of 2023 to again, review the draft Housing Action Plan and then conduct the public hearing tentatively scheduled for June 6th of 2023. At the conclusion of the public hearing and city council's deliberations, we're hopeful that there will be adoption of a plan. So with that background and timeline laid out for you all, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Elliot so he can start discussing his data collection strategy.
Thanks, Lindsey, and good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having me. Can you all hear me okay? Great. Just as a warning, a little bit of context, I've been having some internet issues. I'm in it deep with Sentrylink over the last two days since an outage in my area and I've had some connectivity issues. So if it gets garbled at all and I need to back up, just wave your hands or something and I'll stop and try to assess the situation, find a strategy, but I'm glad you can hear me now. My name is Elliot Weiss. I'm a senior planner and project manager for Community Attributes. We are a planning and economics consulting firm based out of Seattle. We've worked with and I've worked with the city of Sammamish a number of times since I joined the company back in 2012 and happy to be working on the Housing Action Plan with you here. Lindsey did a nice job of giving an overview of the various tasks. And I really look at the project in a couple of different phases with some of those tasks lasting the entirety of the project duration. So one phase certainly is the housing needs assessment and that's more focused on a sort of landscape assessment and includes a lot of data collection, et cetera. We're sort of on a fact finding mission during that phase of the project. Another phase is the Housing Action Plan itself, which is more focused on developing strategies that address the needs identified in the housing needs assessment. A third phase might be that 2023 period when we're focused on review and adoption. The project management related tasks and the stakeholder engagement, community engagement tasks are those that do span all phases of the project. Pardon. So when it comes to the data collection strategy, this is something that obviously will sort of infuse the entirety of the project, but it's especially important here during the housing needs assessment when we're doing a lot of data collection. So it's a data-driven analysis that relies on a number of different sources. Obviously, data from the US Census Bureau, the American Community Survey, maybe to a lesser extent, pandemic-related data sources from the Census Bureau, like the household poll survey will come into play. And then state of Washington data sources such as from the Office of Financial Management or OSM, OFM, Employment Security Department or ESD, and others, including other federal sources. We'll use whatever sources we need to sort of understand who Sammamish residents are, what they do, and what your housing stock is and how that maps to the needs of Sammamish residents. And that's current and future, too. So we'll do a survey and I'll talk a lot more about the survey in a bit, but we're trying to anticipate what needs might exist for Sammamish residents in the future. How do we anticipate that these needs might change from where they're at right now? Because of course, cities take time to build and you have to have some foresight in order to do it well. We're going to obviously be transparent about the data that we're using, not just the sourcing of that data, but whatever limitations those data have, because data are not perfect typically and it requires some degree of interpretation to make it meaningful. And then we're going to be getting ongoing feedback, whether that's through the survey, through community meetings, through focus groups. There are a number of different strategies that we'll employ in terms of engagement to make sure that at every phase of the project, we're hearing from Sammamish residents and other stakeholders about what they're seeing in the data and what they're finding important out of it. During the Housing Action Plan, we're going to supplement this initial data collection with some feasibility modeling. So we're going to look at, based on market conditions in Sammamish, what are the impediments to developing the types of housing that are indicated by the housing needs assessment? That's going to include consultation with key stakeholders. Some of those will be folks with commercial real estate expertise such as brokers familiar with the Sammamish market, developers or maybe contractors. But it will go beyond that, too, and include community reach out to all of these that are on the screen right now. Workers in Sammamish, community groups, nonprofit housing advocates, local religious groups, and social service providers. So across those various techniques on the right, we intend to touch all of those groups and have robust conversations with each. The survey is something that city council has directed us to really invest some time and resources in because they see it as an important plank of this larger engagement task. And as a result of council's request, we've decided to make this a statistically valid survey. So we need to get a certain number of responses in order to make sure it's representative of all Sammamish residents. We also will be distributing it at random to make sure, again, that that sample is representative and that it's not biased just based on the way that we've distributed the survey. We want to understand more about the current housing inventory in Sammamish. So where do respondents live? What type of house? How big is it? What are its features in terms of when it was built? Et cetera. Do you rent it? Do you own it? Do you anticipate downsizing? Do you anticipate maybe having kids or bringing in extended family that might require additional space? And then what are some housing-related challenges that you might have based on where you're at in life, your age, your earnings, et cetera? And all of these topics will be covered under the survey. We'll report out on the results of those, both to the public at large and to you, the planning commission, and to city council as well. Two phases for the survey. So the statistically valid survey, I spoke to, I should note that across both phases, the survey questions will be identical. But for the purposes of the statistically valid survey, we need to be able to make sure that that sample is representative, which means it has to have that random distribution. The selection of households at random in Sammamish will receive a postcard in the mail with information about how to access the online survey. And then after we've received responses to that, to satisfy the number we need for statistical validity and statistically significant results at a 95% confidence interval, we will open the survey more broadly. So the online survey will be available to all Sammamish residents and workers, but we'll be able to keep those two pools of responses separate if you wanted to hear a report on them separately. We'll also be able to give you results to any given question based on a segmentation along any line. So a Sammamish resident versus a Sammamish worker, for example, or by age as another example. What did people say, under the age of 40 say versus over the age of 40? Or what did renters say versus what did owners say? Because we'll be gathering all of that information about who is responding to the survey, we'll be able to report out the results in sort of any fashion that you'd like to see them. Overall, we just want to make sure that residents and workers are both heard and that we're doing everything we can do to make sure that results are accurate and reliable. We're trying to create a shared understanding here, just a foundation about how we, as a team, as a community, communicate about housing needs in Sammamish. We're going to make sure that we're using multiple channels to distribute the survey. So it's not just the postcards. That's necessary for the statistically valid survey, but then using Connect Sammamish, using other mailers, using community newsletters, using partners who are willing to get the word out, using any city social media presence to distribute it broadly. We want to get as many responses as we can. At a minimum, we'll need somewhere on the order of 400 or 500 for statistical significant results, but then hopefully more than that, because we want to cast a wide net, especially in phase two with the open survey. And then we want to summarize the data as clearly as we can and have a conversation about what it means and how it provides implications for that later work on the Housing Action Plan itself, the more strategic focus that I spoke to before. With that, I think both Lindsey and I are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. I think I will do this. Why don't we, even though we're next to each other, maybe the best way is just to use the raise hand function in Zoom so that I'm not looking around too much. Okay, so Roisin, go first.
Thank you, Mark. I just had a question about when we talk about community and community stakeholders. I just wanted to ask, do we intend to reach out to such groups like the school districts and private schools that are here in Sammamish? Also, senior organizations, the HOAs within the Sammamish city limits and utilizing the farmer's market is another way to reach out to our citizens, maybe for that more open survey. But when I think about the statistical or even any of the surveys, when I think about the HOAs are a great way to reach out to the city, reach out to the community. And also, I think talking to the school districts and the private schools, they have a lot to say about housing for middle-income employees. And I know they're struggling at the moment to fill out their positions. So I just wondered if we have plans to reach out to those organizations.
Yeah, I'll take a gander at answering that question. I think the short answer is yes to all of the groups that you mentioned, commissioner. So we do have plans to participate in the farmer's market. That's outlined in our engagement plan that will That's outlined in our engagement plan that we'll be sending to Commerce here tomorrow. We do have plans on reaching out to HOAs, school districts, and other community partners as well.
Perfect. Thank you. And I just had one last question. I had seen that there is a website for the Housing Action Plan, which I think is on the Civic. I just I saw today, so I signed up for it, you know, to get the newsletter. And I just wondered if we'd had much participation. We'd have many residents sign up for that, those updates.
I don't have that information currently. It's definitely something we could report back unless one of my counterparts happens to have that. But I don't think we're prepared to answer that question.
That's okay. I just thought it was, I was really pleased to see it. And I just think it was, it's a kind of a way of tracking interest. And if the public at large are aware of the topics that we're we're going after, and because it's really important that we get as many people as possible to participate. So I think it might be a way of tracking interest, but I was really pleased to see that up there. So nice job. Thank you. That's it.
I think Mike was next.
Thank you. My question is, it's related to actually a comment Elliot made, talked about creating shared understanding. And that implies to me that there may be some education that's involved. So my basic question is with the outreach opportunities, I understand all about this survey and the many groups and so forth. But because this is an emotional issue and people don't necessarily have all the kind of information to be able to provide like, you know, thoughtful answers versus emotional answers. Is there going to be any educational component for this plan going forward?
I can start, and then I imagine there may be staff who wish to jump in. I think the answer is yes, there will absolutely be an educational component to this. But it may be hard to separate it from some of the other engagements, some of the fact finding that we're doing. I mean, we've got a number of ways that we intend to outreach to various groups, engage various groups. And I think what we want to be having are sort of mutually respectful conversations that result in education. I do think that some of the settings we've discussed might be more appropriate for that than others. So for example, we'll have focus groups with community organizations where what we really want to do is hear from those organizations about what they hear from the people that they serve. We really want to tap into their expertise as a network of community providers. But certainly when city staff are going to the farmer's market, as they intend to do, that's an opportunity to have really impactful, I think, conversations in an educational way. And so the farmer's market outreach is not the only way to do that. It's just an example of how we hope to integrate that educational, you know, mission on this project into a lot of the outreach that we're doing. So I know Connect Sammamish can be deployed in ways that can help incrementally to do that. And that's something we've been talking about at Project Team. That's where, because we're just getting going on this, my knowledge falls down a little bit. Still getting up to speed on Connect Sammamish. But if any other staff wished to jump in and speak to some of that, I'd welcome it.
Really quickly. So we do have a lot of different tools and ways to integrate different educational components and different opportunities for input and feedback from the community in Connect Sammamish. And so I think we're looking at doing a little bit of that during Phase One, but then doing a lot more of that in Phase Two, where we're getting into really the meat of some of the different policies and tools. So more on that to come.
Well, it's just a quick suggestion. For example, the focus groups could be run where all you're doing is, you know, asking a few questions, getting responses, capturing those responses in ways you can't necessarily do with the survey. Or they can be much more of a dialogue where you present different options and have more of an educational component. And I think for this, because there is so many strong opinions and a lot of emotion, that that may be beneficial. So please consider that.
Yeah, we absolutely will. And I think one place where the survey helps in this regard, and I won't speak about the survey anymore methodologically, because it sounds like that was well understood. But we really hope to bring some degree to some of these conversations. And the survey has questions in it that are intended to sort of benchmark a representative sample. You know, Sammamish's demographic characteristics at large, but are we even getting a representative sample against what we understand of your housing stock? So hopefully that helps, and we'll take care to communicate that in a way that can inform the other outreach methods.
Okay, Carrie, next.
I was curious if you have the questions, not to share tonight necessarily, but is the survey ready to go and have you formulated those questions? And are they questions that communities seen before? Or, you know, because of what we've just all been saying, is there a way to help prompt folks to think not just about their current situation, but future or alternate that they may not otherwise be thinking of?
Yeah, so we do have the survey drafted, staff drafted a survey. We turned it over to our consultant team with their expertise. They went through it. They added where they felt it was necessary, tweaked as necessary. So we do have that draft. It's not quite ready for release, but we have had it vetted through staff and the consultant team. And so, yes, we do have that drafted.
I would just also add, so it does ask questions about kind of current housing situation as well as future housing situation. So asking some questions around, you know, in the next five to 10 years, you know, prompting a variety of different questions in that angle to try to better understand what those future needs and desires are.
TC.
Thank you, Chair Baughman. Yes, my question is regarding whether or not there is going to be weighted responses within the information that's collected. So are we weighting builders versus residents or brokers versus residents the same, right? If empirically, if I were to go off and ask a builder if we need to build more in Sammamish, of course, they'd say yes, because that's their job. That's how they profit. If we were to ask realtors if there needs to be more, more inventory, of course, there does, because that's, that's their job. That's their livelihood is to to turn property, right? If you were to ask residents, they might have a different response, right? And I'm giving those partially to be a little bit inflammatory, right? Because I'm trying to drive home a point, which is that, you know, are we, are we weighting every response the same? And then as we go a little bit further into that, are we going to quantify the respondents within the information that we collect, right? Are we going to say that, you know, within these certain categories, this is how they answered, right? 52% of residents said X versus N% of realtors or Y% of builders, right? So I'll kind of pause there to see if there's a response to that question. Are we going to be quantifying the results of of the different categories?
Yeah, I'm happy to take this. There are two different kinds of weighting when it comes to surveys. One, you just spoke to. The other would be if we need to wait any specific subgroups in order to make sure that the sample is representative. So if there's a subset of the population that just didn't turn out for the survey, but that we know exists, there can be weighting done to make those responses count at a level that would be in accordance with their actual representation in the population of Sammamish residents. We would only do that if it was necessary, I think. And honestly, we're bringing on a subconsultant with primary data collection expertise in order to make sure that the survey is run well and done in a methodologically consistent way. I think to your point about how we represent residents versus other folks with a different interest in Sammamish, we would not be doing any kind of weighting quantitatively or numerically, but we can absolutely report out the results in whatever way you want to see them. So if you want to see how Sammamish residents alone responded to any given question, we can do that. And we could do that for any other sort of characteristic of the respondents. I mean, down to, so we ask questions about their current living situation, for example. And if you wanted to know what people who lived in a house that they owned versus a house that they rented said to any given question, we could do that too. Any data that we're able to collect about who these people are allows us to segment the responses and report out those responses in accordance with those segments.
Excellent. Thank you. Just a couple of follow ons. One, for promoting the statistically valid survey. I know that's kind of a conundrum, but it might be worthwhile to do a little bit of a, maybe a premailer or a follow up. Hey, you know, for those folks that are getting the postcard or whatever it is, you may have thrown this away thinking it's junk mail. We're looking for your response, right? I know that I can get inundated with postal mail, especially when my children fail to bring it in in a timely manner. One of the other things that I was going to kind of piggyback off of, one of the other chairmen said, was looking for ways to reach out, looking for folks who are kind of in the throes of the educational system. There's Peachjar, which is a wonderful, wonderful way of reaching out for everything from kindergarten registration to the new Taekwondo studio that may be opening, right? I think it's a great way to reach out and capture folks that way. And then finally, my last bit was, I would love to see a portion of this, which is polling prior residents. If we can do a little bit of research on folks who have maybe sold and moved out of the area within last N number of years, why did you leave? And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Carrie, go ahead.
Sure. My question is for Elliot. On this project, I went through the line items of the different groups that you're planning on reaching out to, and I think they're all listed in budget. But the budget, to me, seems extremely light for this series of a project. And I wondered to know as a consultant, how you feel about that budget? Because you're going to randomly sample a tiny percentage really of residents rather than spend the money to get ahold of everybody and really learn something from the larger group. I'd rather see the commission reapproached if you think more money would make it better.
No, we're comfortable with the budget insofar as it will satisfy Council's request for a statistically valid survey. Again, that requires probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 500 responses. I anticipate we'll get significantly more than that. You've had better than expected response rates to similar surveys in the past. Sammamish is a very engaged community. And again, we're bringing on a subconsultant that specializes in primary data collection. I mean, we at Community Attributes do online surveys all the time. But when it comes to that higher touch in order to ensure statistical validity, we thought better safe than sorry. Let's bring in an expert in this space, in the primary data collection space. And they too are comfortable with both the scope and the budget that's been allocated to this. So we feel quite good about it.
That's interesting to hear. Good, good for you. That's my question.
I'll, I'll jump in here with a couple of questions that I have that might be a little bit more basic. So one is, we've used the word, I think we've used the word, sometimes I think I hear things that maybe aren't there. But we've used the word needs in this assessment. And I'm wondering how the, how that gets defined, how, who is defining what the questions are going to be to determine needs. And what I mean by that is what the community needs could be perceived by some people to be some question about housing size, housing type. You know, maybe some people think houses need two kitchens instead of one. I don't, I don't know. You know, that's, that's a whole separate category. But then there's also the needs of affordability, which is of course a significant, significant challenge in this community. And there's probably other ways of assessing needs that I don't even know what that is. I'm curious how the plan has been developed to target one or the other or to leave it open to just hear what people say they think the needs are without guiding them in some kind of a category or a grouping.
It's a good question. We intend to, we intend to be receptive to whatever the needs are that we're hearing from across not just Sammamish residents, but also workers and other stakeholders. So the questions, most of them are multiple choice. We've tried to provide answer choices that could speak to the physical characteristics of the home and could also speak to economic needs, affordability being, of course, a primary concern. So the survey is structured to give opportunity to indicate any of a broad range of needs in terms of future housing, really across that entire spectrum of physical characteristics to affordability. And we do intend, I think, to ask questions that are related, but maybe not explicitly the same as what are your needs. It might also relate to what would cause you to consider leaving Sammamish. So is it, you know, congestion? Is it that you fear that affordability will worsen? Is it that you don't believe that the physical housing unit that you think matches your future family scenario exists in Sammamish? All of those will be responses that an individual would have access to in the survey. And then in certain cases too, the multiple choices are supplemented by write in options. So if our selected multiple choice options didn't cover the gamut, there's, there's an opportunity to go further and specify.
I guess I would just suggest to at least keep a note that we should look for blind spots, because I think there probably could be a lot of different opinions or concepts of what housing needs means to a lot of different people. And we could miss something important by focusing on only what we think that is. My other question is, what is the, I don't think I saw this, but clearly, but what is the kind of the connection of this plan with, for example, the comp plan update? Or perhaps our, you know, development code that we've modified recently? Or some of the other various components of planning and, and the codes that we have and so forth within the city? How is it going to be used? Is really the short version of that?
Sure. So I'll take this question on to start. As I mentioned in the beginning of the, towards the beginning of the presentation, we know that coming from the state level, after adoption of folks in different jurisdictions, there are 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update, which comprehensive plans currently are required to be updated every eight years. That is changing to be every 10 years with this latest round of updates from the state level, from Commerce, and through the Growth Management Act. So with that moving forward, one of the things that we know is going to become a requirement is that that five year mark, at halfway into the plan, we're going to have to report out on housing, what type of units we have, what are being developed, what's available, things of that nature. And so having this Housing Action Plan kind of helps set the foundation for that and gives us tools in our toolbox to help us collect that data and be ahead of the curve and prepared to report that out at that five year mark, which would be roughly 2029, 2030. So that's one of the ways that this plan will help us. Another way is collecting this data upfront. It can be utilized as we're overhauling our housing element within the Comprehensive Plan for 2024. That's one of the elements. There's a number of elements that are required to be a part of the plan. The housing element is one of them of the Comprehensive Plan. And so we'll be able to use this Housing Action Plan as kind of the basis to really take a look at our housing element and see if our strategies, if our goals, if our policies align with what the community is meeting. And the Comprehensive Plans are, are the basis planning document for your development regulations. So once you have your plan, then you have development regulations that help implement that plan. And so that's part of where your development regulations come into play. And so if we need X number of this type of housing, for instance, because we don't have that stock right now, what needs to be done to allow that to occur? Is it zoning regulations need to be updated? Is it building codes need to change? What needs to occur so that a certain housing type can meet the demands that are in our community? Does that address your question?
Yeah, I think the basis of my question was just the idea that this is probably potentially far reaching into lots of other things other than just the Housing Action Plan.
It is, yes.
Okay, thanks, Roshin. Okay, thanks, Roshin.
Thank you. Lindsay, you, you just kind of pretty much answered my first question, and, because I was wondering, just like Mark, how this fits into the bigger picture. So thank you. And Miriam, you also helped me with that question earlier, too. So thank you. I have a much better idea of where all these pieces of the puzzle kind of come into play. And I just, I just had one kind of observation as you guys were talking. When I mentioned earlier about stakeholders and getting, talking to the community, I'm going to assume we're also going to interview city staff, and staff employees are going to be part of the survey, because being, maybe not necessarily people who live here, but people who work here, and that their contribution to the survey will be asked for, too, be it people who work here at the city hall, and people who work in our maintenance, and crew, and all throughout the city, that they will also be surveyed, too. So, because I think their input will be very valuable, too. Thank you.
Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, I guess, maybe even more basic, because I'm curious about, just giving an idea about what the findings are going to look like. So what will we be seeing in the, the report-outs? And, and that would give me a better idea about how that information might end up being used, and things like comprehensive plan and so forth. So we've talked a lot about surveys and so forth, and so that the data that will come together, what's the output going to look like?
I can speak to the housing needs assessment and action plan explicitly, and then if we want to extrapolate from there to, you know, the comprehensive plan or the development regulations, I might let Lindsay speak to that further. But we will produce the housing needs assessment as a separate deliverable that will then later be included, at least at a summary level, in the housing action plan itself. So the final deliverable is, is a report that's very strategic in nature. The housing action plan does just that. It provides a plan of actions for you to meet the identified housing needs. But, you know, the housing needs assessment as a discrete deliverable is an important part of that. It's where we stop and we sort of take stock of what we've heard through the community and stakeholder engagement, what we've discovered in the data analysis, what we have received in terms of survey responses. And we, you know, employ certain analytical methods to sort of translate that into the housing units needed to meet future demand, or anticipated demand, right? We can't see the future, but we'll take our best guess from there. As I sort of spoke to earlier, when I was talking about phasing during the presentation, we'd start working with city staff and other stakeholders to identify the actions that staff can pursue that are best aligned with providing those housing units. Some of those may be code changes, some of them may not be. I also mentioned earlier, we'll be doing some feasibility analysis. So if we find that there's, say, sufficient demand for a certain housing type, but there, to date, just hasn't been developer interest in providing it, that might be a different suite of actions that would be appropriate. Maybe it's outreach to the development community, maybe it's, you know, I, I don't want to speculate, because I don't, I don't want us to, to start talking too much about hypotheticals at this early stage. But the action plan, then, would be very strategic in nature, but still responding to that earlier needs assessment deliverable.
Well, let me do a kind of a clarification question. So will part of the findings be, here's the different, I'll call it just size or characteristics of houses, and the number of units that would be needed? Would that be a piece of the findings?
Yeah, to the extent possible. We aim to make it as granular as we can, number of units by characteristics, by price, by size. All of that to excruciating detail may not be possible. I mean, ultimately, we're reliant on forecasts of future population growth for Samamish. And, you know, those aren't available at the level of individual jurisdictions from the state anymore. They're handled through a custom data request process. Alternatively, you get growth allocations from PSRC, which are informed by the state forecasts. But it's, it's an imperfect science. So we will do our best to sort of tabulate the number of housing units we would anticipate you would need to meet residents' anticipated, I'm going to end up using the word "needs" too much, that's sort of a problem with this type of project.
We get it.
But you see where I'm going with this. We want to tabulate it at the most granular level we can.
So then, the last piece that I have is, but separately, and maybe this is part of the comprehensive plan, there would be decision made on how fully we meet those needs. We may decide to exceed or, or be less than the needed, the amount of needs needed, to use "needs" a few more times.
Yep. Yeah. This won't be, this won't be our first time chuckling over this conundrum, I feel like. Yes. So your comprehensive plan sets policy. In theory, your policy would respond to and accommodate the findings of the housing action plan. So if, at a policy level, you wanted to exceed the identified need in the housing action plan for any given segment, you could certainly do that, and you would take that on as part of your comprehensive plan update. From there, then, and to Lindsay's earlier point, changes to your development regulations might flow from it in order to accommodate that policy goal.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I don't need anything more.
I'm, I'm going to just jump in here real quick and kind of tag out with one question about that. I think I heard you say earlier that the surveys were going to be multiple choice, but also have the opportunity for people to make comments. Is that, did I, am I recalling that correctly?
That's correct. The majority of questions in the draft that we've prepared are multiple choice. Some questions are entirely open-ended, and a few of the multiple-choice questions also have sort of an other or write-in response option.
Yeah, I would just say that, and that's kind of what I thought Mike was actually asking. In my mind, and my experience with surveys, is that the numbers are useful, but the comments are sometimes the most impactful part of a survey. So I hope that we really get the opportunity to see and review the comments. Okay, Carrie.
Thank you. This may have already been, I'm sure it was covered at a high level, but when should, when should we expect to start seeing results from, from the surveys? Even though I'm, you know, the community development will probably continue. And then, is it at that same time? Is it like at a meeting here? And would the public be seeing that as well, you know, kind of with us at that time?
I'll defer to Lindsay on specific dates that we might be reporting back to you, because I don't have the meeting schedule in front of me. But we intend to get the survey going quite quickly. We have, so this is tied to the larger project schedule in the sense that we owe the housing needs assessment as a deliverable to Commerce over the summer months, tail end of June into July. And so for us to allow the housing needs assessment deliverable to be informed by the survey results, we've got to get that survey out in the wild as quickly as we can, and let it circulate throughout the community for a few weeks. And that really puts a premium on getting started now. That's why we've started drafting the questions already, and we're getting that subconsultant in place so that it can be out there in circulation for certainly the majority of June.
Sorry about that. So yeah, just to tack on to what Elliot was describing, the next touch point where we would be formally reporting back is at that September 20th joint meeting with Planning Commission and City Council. So at that time, we'd be reporting out what was found through the needs assessment overall, and also survey results. And I think we'll also be posting the needs assessment, once it's finalized, up on Connect Samamish, so the public can see as well. But obviously, it will also be in your agenda bill for that meeting, too.
Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
When might we see the survey before it gets sent out, so that we can comment on it and understand what the questions are? With multiple-choice questions, obviously, you can steer answers any way that you want them. So I think that the commission should review the survey prior to it being finalized.
So I can answer that question, Commissioner Norman. The survey will not be coming to the Planning Commission for review before it is publicized. We are on a very tight timeline, and we do need to get that out here, probably at the end of May, right beginning of June. So yes, the survey will not be reviewed by the Planning Commission before it is published.
I think that's unacceptable, and I think as a commission, we need to have a discussion about that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I guess I can look both on my screen and to my right and my left. Okay, looks like nobody else has questions at this time. I'll say thank you to Lindsay and Elliot. And I'm sure that the couple times you broke up, Elliot, was all the most brilliant things that you said this evening.
My apologies.
Great, okay. Anything else on this topic? Okay, thank you. Next should be public comment, agenda-related public comment for this evening. So are we, are we, how do we do in-person versus online?
Yes, I will ask our online attendees to please raise your hand if you would like to make public comment. We will be taking public commenters in the room first. And let's see, we have one commenter in the room. Give us just one second to set that up. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Eastman.
James Eastman, Samamish, Washington. Welcome back, Roshin, and welcome. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank on your name. Kelly? Carrie, welcome.
Thank you.
It's great. Roshin, you're coming back for more, and I think, hopefully, we're actually going to make some progress these next few years. But with that said, it's no secret, there's a huge housing shortage in the state of Washington, Samamish. I think the, I'd say the average is $2 million for a house. In my neighborhood, there's houses that are 20 years old, selling for two, three to two six. A new house in Samamish is now, a lot of them for a 4,000-square-foot house on a 6,000-square-foot lot, it's like 3.3 to 3.5 mil. So really, not very affordable, because the supply is just not there. A lot of the famous builders, if you go to their websites, it's interesting, because a lot of their projects now are infill, where they just buy up old houses and get their neighbor's house and, you know, do infill. And I feel there's a lot of good stuff in the development regulations, phase one and phase two. But those, I feel, are kind of geared for if you're this huge landowner that's going to go develop, you know, here's what we want you to do in a perfect world, you know, in the Midwest, or in areas where you're on the block system and there's no critical areas. Everyone could have a driveway 30 feet apart, everyone could have 30-foot-a-lot frontage. But with those phase-two development regulations that just went into effect, that really killed housing supply in Samamish. And there's, you may disagree with me, but look at the data. Go look at the settlement agreement that just happened at Fall City, it's called Fall City Road. I think the landowner gave up like 1,000 square feet of property. And I think the city probably said, Samamish said, hey, we're going to pay you per foot, you know, whatever it's worth. And the landowner's like, no, 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 I'm going to sue you, because you basically took one and a half housing units away from me. 900 square feet, yeah, that's great, but now I can't have 30-foot-a-lot frontage, and now I can't have driveways 30 feet apart, and do all these other ideal things that you want to do in an ideal world. So it probably hurt, you know, that guy, but, you know, a big builder or a landowner, you know, just put bigger houses on bigger lots, because we have to have 30 feet between driveways. I mean, flag lots go away when you do that. You know, some people have a long rectangle lot. Well, now you can't have the guy in the back owning 30 feet in the front, it's not possible, and there's no variances in the code. So I find it a little bit comical that we're, as part of the housing strategy, we're including phase-one and phase-two development regulations up there, because although, some of those really affected supply. And to say we're going to put phase-three in there, okay, I don't know where phase-three is going, but with the state and with really how Samamish is already set up, and, you know, it's about build-out, it should be focused on making sure infill matches the rest of the neighborhoods, because really, that's all you're going to get. And if Samamish really wanted to look ahead, then we've got to quit playing roulette. And I say that because every year, in February, March, the state comes forward and says, there's a huge housing shortage in the state of Washington, and none of the cities are doing anything about it. So we're going to force everyone in the city to put quadplexes within a quarter-mile, a half-a-mile of a bus line, and anybody in the city can put a duplex on their house, and anybody can do this. I mean, that would be just devastating to the characters of Samamish if that happened. But yet, it's probably the only thing city council agrees upon every year, 6-0, is like, we're going to write a letter to the state, we're going to tell them to not tell us what to do, and we're going to handle our own business. And we do that every year. And so it is, three years later, where there's a huge housing shortage, and we're just going to start figuring out what kind of housing we need to build at this point. So I think we also need to be kind of seeing ahead a little bit. I think it's no secret, I mean, Paul Stickney, everyone kind of talks about, we have an overabundance of large, single-family houses. So if we need other types of housing, we're probably looking for something smaller. A lot of them probably wouldn't fit in with the existing neighborhoods. So maybe we should start looking at, you know, a plan to either really make the infill match, if that's what's coming, is more infill existing neighborhoods, or start looking at a city map and seeing where we can build these things and have them match, match each other, match the surrounding neighborhood. Or we can just keep gambling, and, you know, we figure that, you know, if we were to do our part, and none of the other cities do their part, then the state's still going to crack down on us and force us to do anything. So, I mean, that certainly is what we've done the last couple of years, is just gamble every year, because nothing's really happened, other than we passed these development regulations that went from R4 to essentially an R3. So I would just like to, I think it's great, we're doing this, we're getting the information of what we need, but I think we've got to move a little faster and really kind of see ahead a little bit, and know that it's going to lead to probably having to build some houses and putting them somewhere. So I just, I think we need to do that as well, and maybe even come up with a plan for putting on the agenda. And also, in your phase-three development regulations, go ahead and really start to think about how you want this infill to match, because that's probably what's going to happen if things don't change. Thanks.
It looks like we have one hand raised currently. I will go ahead and promote them to panelists.
Hi, Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish two decades. It's nice to see all of the former, existing, new, continuing planning commissioners, and also James Eastman, I haven't heard him speak for a while. Anyway, I just wanted to say a few things. I'm really glad that the consultants talked about doing housing stock and housing inventory, because that's super important. I don't think we know what that is, like, what do we have? And then if you're looking at what people want, I also think it's hard for people to answer a survey if they're not educated first, for like, whenever a topic comes up at city commission, including Stormwater or anything else, I usually research it before I even have an opinion, because it's just really hard to even have an opinion if you just don't have a background on it. So I'm going to give you some old data that I did a long time ago that I think is pertinent, just to see how you think. So people know where Mercer Island is, and maybe you have an opinion about that, maybe you don't. And people live in Samamish, and you probably have an opinion about that, and like, what's important. So from statistics, in about 2015, Samamish had about 2,000, I'm going to use round numbers, about 2,000 multifamily homes out of about 20,000. So we were about a little under 10% or 10% multifamily. And then in 2016, Kohani area was annexed, and that brought about 1,000 more multifamilies. So we went from 2,000 to 3,000 multifamily. So we went from about 10, a little under 10%, not single-family homes, to about just a little under 13, maybe 15%. to about just a little under 13, maybe 15% max, depending on how you use the numbers, if you don't use them rounding. So basically, Sammamish really only has been about 10% to not even 15% multifamily. Everything else is big, single-family, and there's some commercial. So then if you look at the neighbors around, I mean, Redmond, Izaquah, and Bellevue, they were like from 35, they're, they're working on 50% to 60% multifamily housing now. Where we're still kind of at the under 15%. And I asked you in the beginning to think about Mercer Island. What do you think Mercer Island might be? And the statistics where Mercer Island was at 25% multifamily compared to where Sammamish was. So Sammamish just really doesn't have enough different, diverse, and smaller housing, as you hear Paul Stickney talk about. And then since James Eastman brought it up, and then I get seven minutes, there is something called missing middle housing and it is the housing that basically works with, that fits well with single-family homes. So behind me is the screen of that and that's the definition. And it talks about missing middle housing. It's how you, you think, you grow big by thinking smaller, building small. And it allows like single-family homes, cottage homes, duplexes, and all the, all the things in the middle of the chart there. It's from Opticus Design and they, they've trademarked it. But missing middle housing is something that you'll hear nationwide and we just don't have enough of. It's building like courtyard homes where something would be built kind of in a little bit of a C shape and it has a courtyard in the middle of it. It will be cottage homes where the homes are scattered around in kind of a little circle where they have an area and then they have like a barn-style garage where they all park in. So there really are some good designs. There's a lot of things. California actually passed a law about doing that. Oregon was actually the first one. Sammamish had, in the 60-day legislature that we had this year, there were some things brought up. And I know one House bill had 17 amendments on it. And I looked up today and there are two going on where they're trying to make it so people can build duplexes and, and triplexes and quadplexes. And we're not talking about going all the way to the right in the picture where you have something that looks like a town center area. It's the stuff between the single-family homes on the left in white and mid-rise or high-rise, I guess it's more of a mid-rise on the right side. It's all those things in the middle. So I wanted to show you that and talk about it because I think it is important to know about those, learn about it and make sure that whatever regulations that we do support that type of housing. And if you look back, there's, there's some strong towns, videos that I think Paul's brought up during the year, Paul Stickney. My mom has even sent me some and I've listened to some recently. And with strong towns, they note that in about when suburbia started and we started building in single-family homes kind of out in the areas away from the city, we stopped building some types of homes. So there are homes where like one level is a family and then the next level is another family. And they're really cool style homes. And the, in the development reg, to the code lady, Leslie, had actually showed those some. So there are ways to do it. But I think first of all, we need to get the data and we need to know what housing stock we have and what's the real inventory of it. I know Paul Stickney has brought up a couple of times and I spoke with him before, I'm speaking to you tonight, to say, you know, what is our real housing stock? Because I know that we were off by 1,000 or 1,500 in the number. So I redid the percents and presented them tonight from what I've done in the past. But it is really important to get input from people about what they need because I know quite a few people that are single can't buy a home, new couples can't buy a home, teachers, policemen, firefighters have trouble living here unless they're married to, you know, an Amazon or a Microsoft person who has the income so that they can stay in the house. And I go to the water and sewer district meetings and anybody that drives more than 20 minutes to get to Sammamish, they're just losing those people and staff. And we need those people to run regular daily operations and also be able to respond in emergencies. And a lot of older people that I know, they're empty nesters as they're retiring. They look for a place to go and they, they just literally can't find one. So they end up moving to Providence Point or down to Izaquah or, or moving somewhere in Kirkland or Marysville or something or other. They're just not able to stay in the community where they've lived, established friends, they have things to do and they've raised the kids here. So I think those are some of the housing issues. I know probably none of them are surprises to any of you, but those are just some statistics and revised percents that I want to present and I wanted to show you the missing middle housing. So thank you and thanks for James Eastman leading into that.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. We have one more commenter with their hand up. I will go ahead and promote them to panelist. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Stickney.
Hello, planning commissioners. I felt you all had very good, insightful comments. I learned a lot from staff and consultants on the presentation information this evening. Helpful. It's going to cause some changes and some things I'm going to say to, to the positive because there's an old adage, the more you know, the more you know, you do not know. So as you're exposed to more knowledge, you learn that there are things that you don't know. So I'm going to talk about some things tonight and I want to invite each of you to reach out and chat about these topics because I have a fair amount of background. And my aim this evening is to discuss a fundamental, you know, difference, if you will, between needs analysis work and survey work, which tends to be more of what people want, absent knowing the needs in advance to help educate. And I'd like to do not a couple shout-outs, but just a couple comments. I agree with Commissioner Norman that it is important to go over survey questions. And I agree with Commissioner Labby about waiting answers because what lies underneath all this is what is it that the community desires? And that should be our aim. And unfortunately, what the community desires has been fundamentally rooted in EI instead of E-I-E-E. Too much emotion and ideology, absent information, absent contrasting consequences based on what happens if you meet some housing shortage needs and how all the wheels turn because land use drives everything and which set of consequences is most desired by our community. Those answers won't be there when you do your survey. The thing I learned tonight and I can appreciate is you're under a timeframe or crunch, if you will, with Department of Commerce and for some, you know, deliverables on, on this project. But don't get stuck inside the box. What's happening here is Department of Commerce oriented. But the city of Sammamish, should they choose to do so, could expand this and go outside of the box and gather information that is appropriate for our city that is well beyond what Department of Commerce or other jurisdictions do. I'll talk about that in a minute. And there's a real opportunity here that I didn't see before starting this meeting and I see it now, is there's a chance to do two surveys. And think of this current survey as a more EI survey. You're going to be finding out what people feel about housing and needs and stuff based on where they're at without having the data on what the community needs are over a cycle of life. And think about an opportunity after getting all factual gap numbers, which I'm going to talk about in a second, for all economic groups in our community, sharing that information with our public and then doing a survey again. This is where the real power will be to try and come together on getting desired land use for the comprehensive plan. Now, into a few specifics. The 2003 comprehensive plan knew exactly how to do gaps the way that I am proposing, but it's not me. It's the Washington Housing Needs Analysis. It's the PSRC. It's King County. Sammamish has a different definition of a gap. Let's meet on that later. But in 2003, Sammamish knew precisely how many housing units there were existing for three income levels from 0 to 100% AMI and how many households there were. They knew the precise number of housing units versus households and they identified shortage gaps for AMIs from 0 to 100%. What I've been advocating for many years, and I appreciate the consultant saying this information is not easy to get. I would concur, but it can, it can be gotten. Roughly, Sammamish, and this is rough and it's anecdotal, but it's close, is broken down into six, six, if you will. About one-sixth of our population makes 100% AMI and under. One-sixth from 100 to 200%, 200 to 300%, 300 to 400, 400 to 500, and 500-plus. What are all the housing needs of those folks over their cycle of life? How does the number of housing units stack up to households in those category? I'm advocating that we do analysis, not assessment. I'm advocating that we get empirical data, not supposition. When you look up the words analysis and look up the word assessment and see what those two different word means, our community, six-sevenths of our community is above 80% average median income. Well, what are their needs over life? That's more getting raw data. And as I wrote today, I genuinely mean that. And I want to read this into the record. I am not saying that all housing needs must be met in Sammamish. I'm saying clearly all housing shortage gaps and surplus gaps must be known to determine policies to what degree needs are met. And that's also with an informed, statistically valid survey. What would our residents think or answer? What they want for housing for their own community and for themselves if they knew the degree of shortages and surplus we have for all income levels? If we knew what people wanted for cycle of life? And I'm going to leave you with one last fact and still offer to meet all of you because there's a lot more to all this. But here's an interesting fact that I don't think I've shared publicly yet. Over the last 10 years in Sammamish, across the Northwest Multiple Listing Service, there have been 1,400 people sell a house each year. How many of them wanted to stay? That's just a part of this besides knowing all internal needs. I'll stop talking. I'm at the end of time. There's a whole lot more. I'd like to get this right with needs and have a community discussion of outcomes and see what's best for our community on land use. Get us together and move forward in all aspects of comp plan with EI and IE. Have a good evening and thanks for a couple extra seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. That was our last commenter. Back to you, Chair Baughman.
Great, thank you. Appreciate all of those comments. We should probably take a moment and just take a look at the calendar before we end this evening. I'd encourage everyone to take a look. Right now, the calendar shows our June 2 meeting as being canceled. And then the next three after that are on the calendar. I would encourage that folks look at July because that tends to be the start of vacation season and it's important to keep track of who we're going to have available in each of those meetings. Anything else for this evening?
Yeah, I would like to add, I'll turn my camera on. We will ask for Planning Commission's patience with the long-term calendar. We are having changes and direction from City Council on work plan items. And that does trickle down to the Planning Commission. So as we work through those project priorities and what will be coming to Planning Commission, we'll be sure to keep you all updated. But do not be afraid to, or don't be too worried if you see to be determined. We're still working out some of those logistics and we will be back in front of you in June and in July and then anticipate a summer break in August.
Okay, thanks. I think that's it for this evening. Could someone move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving to second that we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned and I'm going to use my gavel one more time.
With authority.